Good evening and welcome to our regular scheduled business meeting. First order of business would be to conduct road call and let's start with Commissioner Sana Gregory.
Me too, sir.
Commissioner Demont Davis.
Present.
Commissioner Gail Hambrick.
Present.
Commissioner Felicia Franklin.
Present.
Madam Clerk, we are all present and accounted for. We're going to have a silent moment of prayer for our invocation. It will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would, please stand with me. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to May 18, 2021 Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. Our first order of business is adoption of the agenda. Do any members want to make any amendments?
Yes, Madam Clerk, I would like to hold Resolution 2021-78, Resolution authorizing Clayton County to grant a special facility use request to allow the Land and Drumline to use or to practice at Flint River Community Center. I think that we need to have further discussion in reference to policy if we're going to start allowing organizations to obtain space for in-kind services. Is there a second on this?
Second.
Second.
All right, properly seconded by Commissioner Davis. Any questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Considering that this actually was held once before for additional discussion, also considering the fact that years ago when I worked with Arts Clayton, which is actually a separate entity from the county, we did the same thing. I'm not quite understanding why we would not want to offer our students a free class to this. In particular, this agreement, if it was passed when it was originally presented, would have actually saved our county money simply because we have to provide services to the community. This is a new space for us. We have to be able to reach all students that are not just interested in sports and so forth, but the arts. But this is not new to our county. Once then, when I was a director over the arts facility for Arts Clayton, there was a similar agreement in place where we actually charged for those classes. But in this case, this particular group would be giving classes to our students and that community only for the ability to have added space for rehearsal, which is allowing for it to be written properly, but it's no different than what we've done before. But I yield to the board and the decision of this board with my question as well as my stance on record.
Okay, but like I said, it's not a that we're against it. We need to develop some policy behind it. All right, if there's nothing else, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed, nay.
Okay, four of one, it passes. Are there any other amendments?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Hambrick.
Uh, yes, I would like to pull number 15, which is Ordinance 2021-100, pull it out for a regular agenda, please.
You said item 15, 2021-100 to amend Code of Clayton County.
Right.
I'm sorry, go ahead, ma'am.
It's number 15.
I got you. And your motion is to pull it out and it specifically addresses amendments, specifically Code of Clayton County, Georgia, Part One, Chapter Two of Administration, Boards, Commissions, and Authorities. Is there a second to this motion?
Second.
Probably move to second. Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, issue unanimous. Any others? All right, if there are no others, I will ask for a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
I'll second the motion. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Four of one, it passes. Madam Clerk.
Our next order of business is a proclamation. National Public Works Week's Commissioner Franklin.
Yes, this proclamation is really to be read into record and I'm going to present the proclamation to each individual department that provides this level of service. This week is something, the week for public workers, is something that has been recognized not only throughout the state but throughout the United States. And it's something that I stumbled upon, and particularly when we think about the number of severe weather conditions we've had and storms and so forth. Our public workers are working diligently to make sure that they're constantly responding and keeping our roads clear. And so I want to bring a tradition to this board that we recognize those folks that have traditionally not been recognized for their work. And before this proclamation is read, this does include those workers with transportation and development, also those that work with refuse control, as well as the board at Nelson's office, the previous code enforcement, some of them have had to get things out of the road and help keep it clean and so forth, and our sheriff's office. So I definitely want to thank all of those who work as public workers and, in fact, all of our employees that work in that capacity. And we may move forward with the reading of the proclamation at this time.
Clayton County Board of Commissioners honors National Public Works Week, May 16 through 23, 2021. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Clayton County, Georgia. And whereas these infrastructures, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government, and the private sector who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Clayton County, Georgia, to gain knowledge of and to maintain ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2021 marks the 61st Annual National Public Works Weeks, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association, be it now, and therefore I, Felicia Franklin, Commissioner, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners designate the week May 16 through 22, 2021, as National Public Works Week, and urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and Canadian Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize these substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. In witness thereof, I have here unto set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this 18th day of May in the year 2021.
Thank you so very much. Just remember, during pandemics, they're out there working.
The board will now hear public comments. Citizens will be given three minutes, maximum time limit to speak before the Board of Commissioners. Please state your name and county of residency for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone. The speaker should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
Darlene Lewis.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Evening. My name is Darlene Lewis.
Rarely hear you.
My name is Darlene Lewis. I'm at 6625 W.A.A. My concern is I have been addressing code enforcement for years concerning the address next door to me. Right now, I don't know if you all are able to, if you were to pull up Google Earth, the property, let me get the pictures for you. The property is infested with rodents. There's an illegal business, scrap business.
What kind of business?
Scrap business. I've called code enforcement several times and I've gotten nowhere with that. Let me show you what I do have.
Well, I'm not going to be able to see it, ma'am, rather than being on a big screen. But if you want to get in touch with me tomorrow, you can send me all that information and we'll follow up.
Well, at this point, this has been going on for years, so where do I go from here? Because it's completely.
Let's talk about it tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you.
Ma'am, I might have this officer to get you my card and you can feel free to give me that call and send me the pictures if you would like. Mickey Garber.
Mr. Chairman, I respectfully yield the podium to the next speaker.
Thank you, sir. Gwendolyn, looks like Pressby.
Pressberry. Good evening, everyone. I am here.
State your name and address.
Okay.
Or the county of your residence.
My name is Gwendolyn Pressberry. I'm a resident of Clayton County, and I am here in regards to property that I have inherited that I recently found out was actually on a private road. And myself and another resident are trying to have the road turned over to the county as a right of way, simply because of the condition of the roads. And not all of the residents on the road are trying to maintain the road. And as I stated before, I just recently found out what the actual status of the road is. And I also want to bring up the fact of a zoning issue that we have. It's a residential area. However, there is a property that is becoming more of a commercial property. And I don't remember seeing any signs about anyone coming here requesting a change in the zoning, so I would like to also have that addressed. And I believe that address is 7025 Bryce Road.
Okay, so the two gentlemen that you need to see is Mr. Jiki, raise your hand, Mr. Jiki, and Mr. Matarco about the road and Mr. Jiki about the code, I mean the zoning for that area. They'll be able to provide you with the information in terms of the actual zoning and Mr. Matarco will talk to you about the roadway itself.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chair, can we ask what subdivision that's in, please?
Bryce Road is in District One, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
No, that's in District Two, Chairman.
Oh, it's Two?
Yes.
I stand corrected, I'm sorry.
Yes, off 314.
My name is Kathy Gaines. I'm a resident of Clayton County, and I'm here for the property at 2109 Anvil. It's proposed to be a convenience store, gas station, and I'm here hoping that that doesn't get approved.
So you're here for the zoning hearing?
Yes.
Okay, although there's nothing wrong with you speaking at this time, but we will have a separate public hearing for those zoning matters where you can come back up again and voice your opposition.
Thank you.
All right, ma'am. Margot Fitzgerald.
My name is Margot Fitzgerald. I've got a complaint about, I'm in Clayton County on Bryce Road in Riverdale. The reason I'm here is because I just found out that the easement that I live on is a private road. This was established back in 1988, and I didn't realize that it was a private road until I noticed the deterioration of the road. I've had two dump trucks of gravel to put on the road trying to make the road passable, but no one will cooperate. And the reason I'm here tonight is, please, I need to make this, let Clayton County adopt this road, to make it public, because the neighbors were not cooperating.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Donald Whitman.
Mr. Chairman, I'm here for a rezoning and I'd like to.
Okay. Thank you, sir. David Harris.
Same comment, we'd be able to talk about it.
Okay, thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, that concludes public comment.
Next aboard, we entertain the consent agenda items.
All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
So moved.
All right, is there a second? Commissioner Davis made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hambrick. Any questions on any other items? All right, hearing none of those, in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, issue unanimous.
The first item is item number 15, which is Ordinance 2021-100.
Good evening, Chair, Madam Vice Chair and Board. I have Ordinance 2021-100, which is an ordinance to amend the Code of Clayton County, Georgia, as amended specifically. Code of Clayton County, Georgia, Part One, Chapter Two, Administration, Article Three, Boards, Commissions, and Authorities, Division One, Generally, to add a new Section 2-57 to set forth additional duties for boards and authorities to repeal conflicting laws, ordinances, and resolutions, to provide severability, to provide an effective date, and for other purposes.
So a motion. I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Probably move to second. Any questions?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, this is Hambrick, and I have a concern because we've had something on the books before, I believe when Commissioner Rooks was here, something she presented. But we have not followed that, and I notice that with this ordinance, I don't see where we have any kind of enforcement mechanism with this. I would like to see us have something with the little teeth in it because we have not been getting these minutes and all from the different boards. I know we're going to have, well, it's mentioned that we're going to have a training and all that, but I would like for us to follow this because it's very important. Some citizens depend on this to keep up with what's going on, not only in the commission meetings, but also in some of these boards that we have appointed. So can we, Chuck, do we have something? I've mentioned this to you before, but I want the whole board to know that we have it on the books, but how is it going to be enforced?
Yes, Commissioner, there is a provision in your code that allows board members to be removed for misfeasance, malfeasance, and nonfeasance, so, among other things. So if it turned up, the way that this section, and I'm specifically dealing with minutes, for instance, the way that this ordinance would read if it's adopted is it puts the burden or the onus on the chair of each board and authority to transmit to the clerk the minutes of a meeting subject to the Open Meetings Act no later than five business days following final approval of the meeting minutes. If that chair designates someone else to do that, then that designee would be the person that would be required to do so within that same time period. So after the meeting minutes were adopted, if that did not happen, this board would have authority under the existing ordinance you already have to be able to remove somebody or discipline them or, you know, reprimand them for failing to, for misfeasance, malfeasance, or nonfeasance. And this could be one of those sections if the board so chose to do so.
Well, in reference to that, my question is, what if they designated to an employee or legal counsel to do that? We have no authority over those individuals, so would it fall back on the chairperson?
As drafted right now, the chair would be ultimately responsible for making sure that, ultimately responsible, making sure that the minutes are provided to the.
So just so that we're clear, regardless of who they designated to, unless it's another board member, then that person, that responsibility falls ultimately on that chairman?
It would.
I have another question on that is, now, I think it read something about five days after the meeting. Now, when I was serving on a board, we had the draft of the minutes, but we did not actually vote on those minutes until the next meeting. So how will that work?
That will still be the case. You can have draft minutes, but the actual requirement to transmit them to the clerk will not be until after they're ultimately approved by the board at that next meeting or board or authority.
Now, when will this become effective?
If it's voted on and approved today, it will become effective immediately.
Meaning that boards that meet after May 18 are responsible for getting those minutes to our clerk?
Five business days after they're finally approved. So if a board met tomorrow and their next meeting is a month later, then as of June 19, well, five days from June 19, then they will be responsible for providing the minutes to the clerk. Five business days.
Okay, so who's policing it? I guess the clerk will let us know or let the boards know, is that correct?
Ultimately, yes. Well, once this is passed, and your questions, I believe, are providing notice, but the clerk will also make sure that if there are minutes that are missing, that she will be able to reach out to those particular boards or authorities to get that and reference this ordinance.
Okay, now, okay, is that one time missing, turning them in, or will they have two or three trials? Two or three times?
Well, the ordinance requires it to be passed, to be provided five days. Any consequences for failure to do so would be up to this board.
So we make the ultimate decision, but at the same time, well, prior to, or as soon as we can, we will gather the chairs of each of those boards to inform them of the repercussions of not doing so.
When are we going to start the training of the boards and all? This would be very helpful for them to know, not only the board chairs, but the board members to know also. Not only that, but other things too pertaining to their responsibilities and all.
Yeah, the CIO has conducted some meetings with the board members.
All right, thank you. Thanks, Chuck.
And there's also, there's also training that the board, every appointee will be also undergo to under this ordinance if it's passed.
Right. All right, thank you.
I have a question, please.
Commissioner Franklin.
Yes, thank you for the efforts to add a specific timeframe for providing the said minutes. But in listening to your responses, it's interesting that Commissioner Hambrick asked the same question that I called and asked because it was very interesting to me that this board had not, it stated that we had not dealt with a specific timeframe in the past. I do believe that, number one, it would be very beneficial for us to have work sessions. We do have work sessions, not work session, working groups on things like this because, let me tell you why. I think that we have to keep in mind that majority of what we're dealing with is governed under the Open Records Act of the state of Georgia. With that being stated, then we're talking about as a board reprimanding or specifically, as you stated, Mr. Reed, disciplining people. I think that we need to bear in mind, as Commissioner Hambrick even said, as we're putting forth any ordinance to put a timeframe, to also add teeth to it, but make sure whatever it is is in line with the state law because it's very, very, how do you say it, evasive when we just say it would be up to the board, whatever reprimand. We may not even have the ability to reprimand, and I hate to bring it up, but it's even as similar to something that was brought before this board about us as individuals on this board. Well, at the end of the day, majority of these boards are authorities, even though they're appointed by us, but we need to have a clear understanding of what's within our authority as a board of commissioners. I would like for us to maybe hold this item until we can get further clarity. I was okay with it initially until I heard the answers just now. I personally think that we just have too many unanswered questions to make sure it's airtight. I find that we start off with a great idea and a great intent, but we have to make sure that we follow the steps to make sure that it's accomplishing the goal that we set out for it to accomplish. And as a voting member, I'm not quite sure that we have dotted our i's and crossed our t's in reference to this particular ordinance.
Let me say this, I agree with Commissioner Franklin. I would like to see us actually have that in writing as to what happens and the different steps and all to go on. I really, because that was a big question of mine when I read this. So I would like to get a little bit more clarification also.
Who made the motion on this?
You did.
I did?
Mm-hmm.
You seconded the motion. Okay, so what we'll do is I will make a motion to table it for further discussion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any questions?
Yes, can we add a timeframe that we will go back to this? I think that it's definite that it's important for us to put a timeframe on it and add specific deliverables that we'd like to see of additional information added or delivered to us during maybe upcoming work session.
Let's say, because I really don't want to, as you said, dot our i's and cross our t's, so we need to make sure that we're doing it and moving forward correctly, expeditionally, but cautiously, making sure that we're putting everything in it that we want to. So I would say, what's this, may, maybe first, second meeting in June, which is what date?
You're talking about the second work session or the first work session in June?
No, that's a good point. Let's do the second work session in June and the first meeting in July to seek approval for it.
With respect, Mr. Chairman, the second work session in June would then be the 22nd. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Those in favor, aye.
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 Opposed, issue unanimous.
So who's seconding your motion on this?
Commissioner Davis.
Okay, our next item, Mr. Chairman, is appointment, appointments.
All right, first appointment is to the Greenspace Land Trust Board. It's an at-large appointment. It has six members. Two of them are always the chairman, vice chairman of the Board of Commissioners. The other four are at-large. Two members were previously appointed and live in Districts Three and Four. This is for one of the last two appointments. Are there any recommendations?
Yes, this is Hambrick, and I do have a, I do have a recommendation for District Two, which is Ms. Mary Keith, K-E-I-T-H, Mary Keith.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Davis seconded the motion. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, issue unanimous. Next appointment is also to the Greenspace Land Trust Board. It's also at-large. Are there any recommendations? Any recommendations? All right, hearing none. Madam Clerk, hold that till the next meeting.
Our next item is B O C two zero zero three zero zero forty-five, rezoning, request to rezone R S S one eighty to P U D, community development.
Yes, agenda item number B O C two zero zero three zero zero four five. The applicant, Battle Law P.C., on the behalf of Blackstone Investment Company, is requesting to rezone twenty-five point seventeen acres of land from R S one eighty's single-family residential to P U D planned unit development for a proposed new one hundred units, single-family-attached town home community known as the Towns at Flat Shores. The subject property is located at eighteen twenty-one Creel Drive with frontage along the north side of Creel Drive, near its intersection with West Fairville Road, just east of the Castle Gate subdivision and Flat Shores Park. The parcel ID is identified on the agenda. This request was recommended for approval by planning commission and, and, I'm sorry, recommended for approval by the zoning advisory group and the planning staff. The, this is an addition, the applicant has submitted a letter on this evening that I've submitted to the clerk by email for the official record, the request to, for an additional table to the June fifteenth meeting. Is there is a companion request associated with this on the next item?
All right. Ms. Bab. It is the applicant's request to table again?
Yes, it is. Michelle Battle, One West Court Square, Decatur, Georgia, three zero zero three zero. We've been working very diligently to try and address the issues that have been raised by Commissioner Hamburg and by the community. We have obtained a ICE study, an intersection study that was requested. We are also in the process of finalizing the traffic study so that we can go back and report to both Commissioner Hamburg and the community the findings. So we would respectfully request the deferral or the tabling until next month. Thank you.
And that's for both items?
Yes, sir, for both applications.
Commissioner Hamburg?
Yes, I move that we table this zoning item, both zoning items, eighteen and I believe that nineteen, on the agenda for tonight. That we table until June fifteenth, twenty twenty-one.
All right. Motion's to table until June fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Probably moved and seconded. Any questions? Hearing none. Those in favor, aye.
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 Opposed.
Would you like me to sound into the record just for record, the, the companion case for the preliminary?
Yes, please. I'm sorry.
The companion case to the first one acted on is L S two zero zero six zero 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 nine, preliminary plat, the applicant, Battle Law P.C., on the behalf of Blackstone Investments, requesting a new one hundred units, single-family, attached town home community on twenty-five point one seven acres of land, property zone R S one eighty. And with the request for rezoning is for the P U D in order to accommodate the preliminary plat proposed for the one hundred lots. The subject property is located at eighteen twenty-one Creel Drive, adjacent to the East Castle Gate subdivision and Flat Shores Park. The parcel identification number is identified on the agenda. Again, it's a staff recommendation was for approval, zoning advisory group recommendation was for approval with conditions as well.
And for the record, Madam Clerk, let the record show that Commissioner Hamburg previously made the motion to table as requested by the applicant and approved by the board to table till June fifteenth.
The next item is item number twenty, B O C twenty ten zero zero six four sixty-four, C U P, to allow a food pantry and clothing donation center.
Agenda item B O C two zero one zero 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 six four, the applicant, Diane Collins, on behalf of Faith Walk Ministries, Inc., is requesting a conditional use permit in a general business district to allow for a food pantry and clothing donation center within an existing building. Property is located across from the Faith Walk Ministries Church at six one zero nine Riverdale Road. The parcel ID number is identified on the agenda. The acreage on the parcel is point eight nine acres. The, this again is a table matter. Staff recommendations for approval, zoning advisory group recommendations for approval.
And this is for a decision only, correct?
The, the applicant is here to, to present some revision, some improvements that were made to the property at the request of the, of the board at the, at the hearing in, in March when they were tabled. So there is representation here to update on the approvals if there's any need from the.
Okay, but we don't need to have a public hearing on this one, correct?
No, we do not. We've already had.
Okay. Please take the floor. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. I am Diane Collins. This is my husband, Lawrence Collins. We reside on Gulf Valley Way in Stone Mountain in DeKalb County. And I am going to give an update as far as what we have done thus far. We have removed the black awnings from the front of the building, as instructed. We have removed the canopy from the front of the building. We have removed the burglar bars from the front windows, entrance doors, and garage doors, as instructed. We have removed all disconnected and unused light poles from the site. We have stuccoed all brick portions of the building and painted the entire structure a tan color with rust color trim to coincide with the existing newly built structures on Riverdale Road, that is, the library, the police precinct, the senior citizen center, and the fire station. Hallelujah. All right, that's what we've done, and we have done this out of our own pockets. The last time I was standing before you, I said that we were trying to secure a loan to pay for it, and there was a little holdup with the loan because of something that was going on in Clayton County with the court system as far as a backlog. So when we saw that we could not pursue the loan as planned, we went in our own pockets. And so we are dealing with a total cost of eighty-five thousand dollars. And we will not have a loan after we completely pay for the construction.
That's great. That's great. Looks real good.
You've seen it?
I'm looking at it on screen.
Yes.
Looks good.
Yes. Now, did you see there? We've got some paper to the windows, but that's going to come down in a little while. I don't know how many others. That's, that's the east side of the building where the garages are. All of that's freshly painted, freshly stuccoed.
Okay. Great work. Commissioner Hamburg?
Yes. Let me refer to Madeline. Madeline, we received a letter. I received something from you that you received from the bishop this afternoon where it was stated that everything that was requested will be finished by the end of May. Is that correct? Is that correct, Bishop?
Yes. And when I said everything will be completed, I was referring to the dumpster that is to be brought out to the site, because even as we were constructing, we were making all of these constructions, we had a huge dumpster brought out. And the community, the residents in the community, a lot of them were dumping mattresses on our site, I guess because they saw the dumpster. And so we were dealing with furniture, four or five mattresses, and we were like, okay, if we're not in that building yet, we bring out another dumpster, is this going to create the same kind of situation? So we kind of did not bring out the dumpster, but we have talked to waste management, and they said they could bring it out in twenty-four to forty-eight hours.
There are two agenda items that, that you all asked. That was the dumpster encasing.
Right.
And parking, striking for the parking lot for the volunteers.
Right. And also, I think I read something about some awning.
Yes, the awning is something we are doing ourselves. It's not a requirement, but when we look at the front entrance of the building, we just feel something needs to be over that front entrance.
Right.
So we're doing that on our own. That's an expense that we are paying for. But I think it will make the facade of the building look a whole.
Even a little better.
Okay. Okay. Let me ask the zoning officials, Madeline and staff, has everything been completed that was requested at our last meeting?
No, they've indicated that there are still some improvements still ongoing, and we have not conducted a final inspection of all those improvements, understanding that the parking has not yet been approved, and the dumpster is the most outstanding. And again, they indicated that they will be adding a canopy. So no, there are still some outstanding improvements.
Okay, from, from the request of the, of the county, from the county?
Right, based on what we had agreed upon at the, at the past hearings, yes.
Okay. Okay, while considering that, Bishop, I would like to wait until everything that the county has requested be finished and all. And would you say June, the June fifteenth, would that be an okay day for the next zoning meeting, and we can go ahead and finish this up?
I guess so.
Can you have it done by June fifteenth?
Oh, definitely. Yes.
All right, so you're willing, so you're willing to table it once again till June fifteenth?
One more time, one more time.
Okay, okay. Well, I, okay. Well, I move that we table this until June fifteenth, so everything that was requested by the county will be completed.
Is there a second?
I'd like to make one more request. If any of you all would like to make a contribution to that, to our fund, we would appreciate it because all the funds that are, that are being donated are coming from the members.
You have not, because you asked not. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Probably moved and seconded. Any other questions? Hearing none. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Issue natus.
Thank you, Bishop, and husband.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
The next item is item number twenty-one, B O C twenty-one oh one dash zero zero eighty-six, future land use amendment from M X to H D R.
Agenda item B O C two one zero one dash zero zero eight six. The applicant, Moore Bass Consulting, Inc., is requesting a future land use map amendment for twenty-one point six acres of land located at three zero seven one, Mount Zion Road, and also at thirty-one fifty-one, Mount Zion Road, and thirty-two oh one, Mount Zion, three parcels involved. The request is to change the future land use plan map from mixed-use designation to high-density residential in order to accommodate two hundred and, a two hundred and ninety-four unit apartment development at twelve units per acre. The subject properties are located near the intersection of Highway one thirty-eight and Mount Zion Road. The parcel IDs are identified on the agenda. The recommendations from the staff, from the planning staff, was approved. Recommendation from the zoning advisory group is for denial.
Say applicant present. Say applicant present. Are you the applicant, sir? Please state your name and whether you're representing or not.
Take the mask off.
Please.
Good evening. My name is Connor McNally. I'm a principal with Shelton McNally Real Estate Partners. We are the developer of the project. I reside in the city of Decatur in DeKalb County.
All right. So would you want to, we've got to have a public hearing on this. So would you like to reserve any minutes in rebuttal should somebody oppose?
Yes, I would like to reserve that.
How many minutes out of ten?
To rebut.
For rebuttal?
Five.
Okay, five. So you've got five minutes to speak now. So please, proceed on. Set, set the clock for five. It was five, not four. Oh, go ahead. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, so again, I'm representing Shelton McNally Real Estate Partners. We're the developer of this project. It's a twenty-one point six acre parcel between Mount Zion Road and Interstate seventy-five. We're proposing to build a new Class A market-rate apartment community with affordable rents. The complex will have two hundred and ninety-four units. They are predominantly one bedrooms. Sixty percent of the units are one bedroom, and a hundred and twenty of the units are split between two bedrooms and three bedrooms. Our projected rent range is between twelve hundred dollars and sixteen hundred and fifty dollars a month. And again, these are market-rate, unsubsidized units. The, the complex is finished to what we would describe as Class A standards. That's granite countertops, stainless appliances. There's some representative pictures from other developments that we have done. There are community amenities that include a, a club room and a fitness center. This is the clubhouse building that, that contains those. These are pictures from an identical development that we have underway in Greenville, South Carolina. Dog park, valet trash service, a approximately one and a half mile walking trail around the community that we added as part of the process and consultation with staff and with the zoning advisory group. The location is situated less than a mile from the intersection of Mount Zion Road and Highway one thirty-eight, where the parking ride is right beside the interstate, the large Kroger anchored grocery center. We are across the street from an enclave of about seven other fairly similar apartment communities on the other side of Mount Zion Road. So we believe it's a very appropriate use for this location. Again, convenient access to retail, convenient access to the interstate, and very consistent with the existing uses in this area. In terms of the, the, the market, one of the things that we've seen in Clayton County is a significant demand for high-quality rental units. Obviously, there's a mix of housing in the county. The homeownership rate has increased in Clayton County, but it is sitting, we believe, around sixty percent, so a little bit below the national average, but it has been increasing. And in order to accommodate the growth in the county, a combination of both high-quality apartment units as well as single-family units is what's required. Unfortunately, in the county, there has not been a significant new apartment complex developed or built in almost seventeen years. Two thousand and four was the last time that a, a complex of any scale, meaning above a hundred and fifty units, was developed. And the result of that is that there has been a compression of the vacancy rate. The vacancy rate in Clayton County is about five percent, which is below the average for metro Atlanta. And rents have been growing unfortunately quite, quite strongly. So they've been north of ten percent over the past couple of years, which is a, a result of the fact that there just is not enough supply. There has been no new supply in seventeen years. So we see a market opportunity for attainably priced market-rate housing. So that sits at about eighty percent of area median income. Our tenants will be people making between forty-five and seventy-five thousand dollars a year to, in order to afford these rents. And again, we're, we're trying to deliver a very high-quality product that fits in at attainable price point and located where our tenants would want to be located with convenient access to the interstate and to retail amenities.
All right. Thank you. Is anybody here would like to speak in favor of applicant's request? Anybody want to speak in favor? Anybody? All right, hearing and seeing none. Anybody would like to speak in opposition to it? Anybody in opposition?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Garber, excuse me.
May I remove my mask?
Yes, sir.
Madam Clerk, Nikki Garber, Incorporated, Rex, Georgia. My only reason to speak against the fine gentleman that made this presentation and what he wants to build here is that I read on, on the itinerary, the planning and zoning recommended approval, but the ZAG recommended denial. And I would like for all parties involved be in line for approval, and the issues that ZAG brought forward for denial, I would like to see these issues resolved. That's all I have to say about this.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Please, Garber.
Anybody else like to speak in opposition? Yes, sir. You have five minutes for a rebuttal if you'd like to say anything in addition to.
The only thing that I would add, our, our process with the zoning advisory group, we, we were, we were, had, we were initially tabled after the first hearing. At the first hearing, we had very positive conversation consistent with staff's recommendation for approval. We were asked, there was quite a discussion about the amenities of the property to make sure that they were sufficient. We were asked to include a walking trail, which we agreed was a, a reasonable request and something that we were prepared to do. We offered to do it as a condition to the approval, but we were asked to table and come back and show a specific design for that walking trail at the next meeting, which we did. And when we came back, we, we had a positive conversation about that, but then there were some concerns expressed. It appeared to be just about apartments themselves and whether apartments, apartment tenants would look after a complex as well as homeowners. That was discussed somewhat, and, and then a motion was made for denial. Some of my statements and my comments earlier sought to address that issue. One thing that I would point out is there, there's been a dearth of supply of any new institutional apartment projects in the county over the last seventeen years, but over that same time, there's been a significant amount of investment in both. same time, there's been a significant amount of investment in both purchasing and renovating existing apartment communities. An example of this is of the properties across Mount Zion from this site, three of those properties have traded in the last year for a hundred and forty to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a unit. There's been significant institutional investment. The owners of those three properties, the new owners, are real estate funds that range in size from a billion to twenty-five billion dollars. So that's generally pension fund money, large insurance company money, and that type of investment in these complexes comes with a significant amount of reserves and a significant amount of investment in both the physical asset and the tenancy to make sure that they are treated well, they are maintained, they are kept well, and that they, they, they reflect the high community standards. That is the way we operate. This will be a north of a forty million dollar investment for our company. We will hold it for the medium term, but ultimately would look to sell to a large, stable institution who again would look for a long-term, stable income from the property. That is something in the apartment space that's quite different to where it was thirty to forty years ago, when a lot of apartment ownership was more mom and pop, more smaller operations, and so the, the level of standard of investment in the property and therefore long-term upkeep has really changed across Metro Atlanta and across most of the southeast over the last twenty or thirty years. So we really do not agree with the perspective that an apartment community won't reflect well, won't be well-treated, won't be looked after, and will have, you know, either, either, you know, crime or physical, physical issues with the property, and those were some of the concerns that had been expressed inside me.
Okay, thank you, sir. Madam, what are the conditions?
Well, the conditions are shown on the board. There are five recommended conditions from the planning staff.
There are no conditions on the land use map.
Right, I'm sorry. Right now, you sound that the future land use plan amendment, the companion cases, the rezoning, and those conditions are attached to that rezoning.
To the zoning.
Chairman, I have a statement. You, you stated that there has been no development in the last seventeen years, but I want to correct you, on Mount Zion Circle, we do have a market rate apartment going up as of this moment. Land has, our ground has already been broken on that property going up, so I just wanted to correct you on that.
Okay, and that, that on Mount Zion Road?
On Mount Zion Circle.
Circle. It's about two miles from there. All right, I believe this is Commissioner Gregory's district. Commissioner?
Mr. Chair, I, I know people in my district, they really have a negative attitude toward apartments, but if people can see how we need these for teachers, for folk who just starting out, and these are market rate apartments, they're not, you know, being, you know, financed through any kind of low-income bonds or anything. And with that, I have a motion that we approve this petition.
All right, motions for approval, is there a second?
Second.
Probably moved and second, any other questions? All right, hearing none, those favor eye. Eye.
Eye.
Opposed. It's unanimous. Next.
Related case, B O C dash two one zero one dash zero zero eight seven, the applicant Moore Bass Consulting, Inc., is requesting to rezone twenty-one point sixty acres of land located at three zero seven one, Mount Zion, three one five one, and three two zero one, Mount Zion, to rezonate this property from M X mixed-use district and O N I office district to a new district, R M residential multifamily, to allow two hundred and ninety-four apartment units at twelve units per acre. The subject properties are located near the intersection of Highway one thirty-eight and Mount Zion Road. The parcel ID or the three parcels are identified on the agenda. The staff recommended approval conditional with the five conditions on the board. The zoning advisory group again recommended denial.
All right, sir. And again, how many minutes would you like to reserve?
Given that their companion applications, really the comments in the last one covered everything, so I don't have anything additional to add, are there going to answer any questions that the board may have?
Okay, would you like to reserve any minutes for rebuttal?
I will reserve the ten minutes then for rebuttal.
No, you can't reserve ten.
I only got five left.
Yeah, you can, yeah, you can, because you're not going to say anything now.
Excuse me.
All right, is anybody here want to speak in opposition to the request? Anybody in opposition? Come forward, please.
Regina Deloach, Unincorporated, Rex. I'm sure if the board is aware that, as Commissioner Davis said, we have another unit coming up, that is three hundred and six units that is coming up, that will give us a total of about six hundred units that will then further overcrowe the school in that area. So I just want to make sure that we are aware that we're going to place additional six hundred units on top of the additional that's coming on Mount Zion Circle to that area. So that's something to really, for us to think about, is the school system, and if we're trying to look at that area and partnering with Star C, the nonprofit out of Atlanta, how would that, that is going to further impede our school system by placing additional children at that school. So, thank you.
Now, what I did before we approved the last division is I actually met with some members of the Board of Education to discuss that absolute issue, and they assured me that as far as that complex, it wasn't going to impact them negatively on that or overcrowe their schools.
Okay.
So I did do that. But in conjunction to that, what she's saying is, I guess we do have a wa, a road widening project on Mount Zion, correct, Mr. Matarco?
Not that portion.
Not that portion?
No.
Okay. So I guess my, my question is, as far as the thoroughfare, how would that impact as far as the, the traffic flow?
Right now, we, we are just in the preliminary analysis of the traffic. They are providing the standard D cell lane into the complex. There is a question that they still have to address about, does it mean our qualifications for a left turn lane into the complex? The adjacent parcel towards one thirty-eight that's been approved is also providing that, that left turn lane into the complex and sidewalk up to the school and stuff like that. But it, it, the idea is to provide the turn lanes to get the turning traffic hour, the through lanes, so the through lanes can continue to function.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else want to speak?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Garber.
Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, Unincorporated, Rex, Georgia. Clayton County has a problem with transientsy in this county. What we need is people with skin in the game. You've got, you've got plenty of apartments and rentals, and these investors who come in here and buying homes is adding to the transient, the transientsy of the county. What we need are people with skin in the game. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else?
Ms. Bam?
The, we have the, the five recommended conditions, do you want me to sound those conditions?
Yes, please.
Mr. Chair.
Oh, wait a minute, rebuttal, I'm sorry. Thank you. Yes, sir, like to say anything in rebuttal?
I'll, I'll be brief, but just as it relates to the, the school question, I would remind everyone that this, the, the product that we're delivering is not targeted to school-age, to, to families with school-age children. Sixty percent of the units are one bedrooms, only a hundred and twenty of them are two or threes. We have two very similar communities, one in DeKalb County and another just delivering in Greenville County in Greenville, South Carolina. I spoke with our management team and got a, a survey of the amount of kids that we have. In neither complex, there are no kids in any one-bedroom unit, and of the two and three-bedroom units, we tend to have between ten and twelve percent of the unit count, that's how many children we have. So in those complexes, what that would translate to here is about fifteen children in the total complex of two hundred and ninety-four units. This, this complex will deliver over half a million dollars in incremental real estate tax revenue to the county every year, and so I would put forth that while there will be additional children to the school system, the fear of overcrowding, I don't think is valid, and frankly, the incremental tax revenue that's been generated more than compensates and offsets for the, the small amount of additional school-age children.
Okay, thank you, sir. Ms. Bam?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Franklin?
Yes, real quick, I don't know if I missed this, but considering these are not homes, but apartments, and we know that we're looking at the market rate, and we talk about market rate, but can you please put in plain vernacular what you're expecting the market rate to be among those one-bedroom, two-bedrooms, and three-bedrooms apartments?
Yes, absolutely. I, I, so the question is about the rent levels and what those will be for each of the unit types?
Excuse me.
Yes, that was my question.
Yes, so one-bedroom units will be about twelve hundred to twelve hundred and fifty dollars a month. Two-bedroom units will be about fifteen hundred dollars a month, and three-bedroom units will be about sixteen hundred and fifty dollars a month.
And what are the market rates in your other areas that you have in DeKalb and any other place you referenced?
So the complex in DeKalb County is slightly below that in terms of rent levels. The complex in Greenville, South Carolina, is almost identical in terms of rent levels. So when we, when we look at that question of school-age children, you, you often would expect there to be more school-age children with a lower rent level, but in DeKalb County, even with rents that are fifty to a hundred dollars lower than these, we have that same ten to twelve percent of the two and three-bedroom units.
Okay, and let me say this, what you've just shared with me, it translates to me in this manner, that the amounts that you're offering actually are going to be within realm of what school-age children, families can afford, which I'm all for, market rate apartments. But just to speak to it, we really need to make sure that we're in line with other areas, and as we know, in order to get to that, that position of a market rate, we have to offer more amenities. And so it would be my concern, even though it's not in the district where it's, that these rates are consistent with, it's not, it's not consistent with what we want to attract to the community. I, I do believe that there is space for market rate rental homes, because there are a lot of millennials who don't want to have to purchase a home, I get that, and they don't necessarily have children. However, when I'm looking at what the rate is going to be, that's not as promising to me when you're looking at the Brook Havens and the other areas, and I understand this is in Clayton, but we don't need to redline our community.
Ms. Bam?
Five recommended conditions, being condition number one, the maximum number of apartment units shall be two hundred and ninety-four. There shall be two road access points on Mount Zion Road, and the site, and the site layout shall reflect the submitted plan submitted date of four twenty-six, twenty twenty-one. Condition number two, provide decorative fencing along the entire road frontage of Mount Zion Road. Condition number three, provide walking trail as depicted, as depicted on the site plan, submit to the staff on four twenty-six, twenty-one. Condition number four, the architectural appearance of the apartment building shall reflect the drawings submitted by the applicant and the renderings attached to the, the report. Condition number five, must adhere to all county codes and regulations pertaining to site development, except for where relief may be granted by the Board of Zoning Appeals. That concludes the five recommended conditions.
Commissioner Gregory?
Yes, sir. Okay, the first thing, Mr. Gregory, I would like for you please, sir, to make sure our inspectors watch this. I'm thinking about that subdivision about five years ago that have promised the people, you know, a nice walking trail, and it was after the fact, you know, we went out there and saw that the developer was not doing that. So when we, you know, when we look at these conditions, let's make sure our inspectors are watching. Also, I want to say that when we wonder why we're not getting the, you know, the different amenities and so forth that we want in our area, it's because people have to go to Henry or Douglas or Fayette County to rent their apartment, you know, and use their disposable income to go to Sprouts or to go to Whole Foods, these things that people say they want that we can't get in Clayton. The reason we can't get them is because, like I said, I go home every day, you know, my husband and I, we're a single-family homeowner, and we go home, so we don't go out all the time. So when people have a single, you know, when they have this disposable income, they're going out to eat, but we'll keep that in mind, we, we do need these apartments, and I, I don't know why people are so fearful of apartments. If you go downtown, you know, Little Edgewood, you see, that's what's going on, and people are buying into them. And with that, Mr. Chair, I offer a motion to approve this petition.
Is there a second?
Second.
Probably moved and second, any questions? All right, hearing none, those favor eye. Eye. Opposed. It's unanimous. Thank you.
The next item is B O C twenty-one oh two zero zero ninety, P U D rezon, G B to P U D for forty-six single-family lots.
Agenda number B O C two one zero two zero zero nine zero, the applicant Clayton Tara L L C is requesting to rezon fifteen point five-two acres of land located at fourteen twenty-five Tara Road and ten four one five Panhandle Road, Hampton, Georgia, which is further known as parcel IDs, the two parcel IDs that are identified on the agenda. The request is to rezon the property from G B to P U D in order to accommodate a forty-six lot, single-family subdivision. This will be a single-family detached product. The, this is, the staff recommendation is for approval with conditions, the zoning advisory group recommendations, it's for approval with ten conditions, and there's, there is also a case to this as well, for the plan approval.
Okay, sir, before you begin, would you like to save any minutes for rebuttal?
Good evening, my name's Don Whitman, and my brother is Hal Whitman. I live in Clayton County. Hal can't be here tonight because of a medical condition, and he asked me to stand in for him. I can assure you, he'd rather be the one here, not me, because I'm still his little brother, and I can't do anything as good as he can.
Would you like to save any minutes in rebuttal to, to, to respond if anybody's in opposition?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm going to be representing for the petition, but he wanted his brother to make, yeah, we're going to, we'd like to reserve about three, four minutes for, let's say four minutes for rebuttal.
Okay.
I tell you what, let's say two minutes, because I'm going to speak after him.
That'll be fine. Please state your name again.
Don Whitman.
Okay.
So, Hal thought until today that he was going to be able to be here, when he realized he couldn't, he sent me an email and basically said, this is what I was going to tell him. And so I don't want to mess it up, I'm just going to read what he wrote, sure that way I don't get in trouble. I'm no stranger to Clayton County. My first job out of school in nineteen sixty-five was based in Lovejoy, Georgia, just over the county line. I got married that year and moved to Jonesboro, had two children, and lived in Jonesboro for six to eight years. I live in Florida now, but I still have a house in Hampton, Hampton, where I spend a lot of time. In nineteen ninety-four, I purchased a three hundred and sixty-five acre tract of land on Tara Road from the Clayton County Board of Education and Resolution Trust Corporation. I had it rezoned to a P U D. Roughly three, three hundred and fifty acres of the P U D were zoned for single-family residential, and the fifteen acres at the corner of Tara Road and Panhandle Road was zoned for neighborhood shopping. This fifteen-acre parcel is the parcel that we're considering tonight. The other three hundred and fifty acres was developed and built out as single-family homes with the exception of Hawthorne Elementary School, and I donated the property for Hawthorne Elementary. I never developed the fifteen-acre parcel because I did not believe that a commercial development on this property was suitable for the neighborhood. If you see fit to approve the zoning tonight, I can assure you that you will have one of the nicest single-family subdivisions in the county. I have a commitment from Smith Douglas Homes to build the houses beginning immediately upon zoning approval. The homes will include ranch-style and two-story, single-family homes, with prices starting in the mid-two-hundred thousand range, going up to the high-three hundreds and possibly to the lower-four-hundred thousand. There will be plenty of green space, room for gardens, and the development will be nicely landscaped. We do not plan to have tennis courts, golf courses, or swimming pools, but there will be plenty of amenities, including a covered pavilion, a putting green, and walking trails. It will be a first-class community. Thank you for spending time protecting the community.
Thank you, sir.
That was Hal, this is me. I've lived in Clayton County for forty years, I've been in my house in Jonesboro for thirty years, and this is a good development. It's going to provide a lot of income to the county, and it's a lot better than putting another shopping center out there in front of a bunch of neighborhoods.
Thank you, sir.
I hope you don't have a lot of questions today, Mr. Whitman. David, you ought to speak, and so he's got a presentation, and he can answer questions.
Sir.
Thank you.
I'm gonna hurry. My name is David Harris, so one-eighteen South Main Street here in Jonesboro. Uh, I'm the attorney representing, uh, Clayton Tower of the applicant. Uh, we're not here to pick a fight, we're not here to litigate, we're not giving a constitutional notice letter, we're just asking that y'all consider this. This is basically downzoning of this property of fifteen acres. Uh, Mr. Whitman's owned it for a number of years. It's already zoned put in G B. Uh, as Mr., as his brother said, as Don said, he opted not to develop it commercially, because he didn't think it's the best use of the, of the, of the property. So, uh, what we have proposed is a forty-six lot, uh, subdivision. Uh, it came out of, uh, staff recommended approval with conditions, uh, Zag Group, uh, same thing, approval with conditions, except they added a couple that we can't live with. Uh, so, uh, that's basically what I'm here, just, I guess, to discuss the conditions more than anything else. But, um, Mr. Whitman's been a good corporate citizen, paid tax on his property for years. As his brother said, he actually donated the land for Hawthorne Elementary. Uh, he's got a national, regional builder, I should say, Smith Douglas Home lined up to, to, to build them, to build us out, to acquire the lots and build it out. They closed almost two thousand houses last year. They know what they're doing, they're not rookie builders, and they build a good product. I don't know if we're gonna have the pictures of the houses, uh, if this is representative...
There they go.
Okay, there you go. These are representative homes of what Smith Douglas proposes, and, and the conditions that we, we're unable to live with, I mean, ba- basically, our proposal on the amenity area is for a passive amenity area. We're proposing, I, I spoke with Commissioner Franklin about this, and I'm hoping she's going to, uh, she's gonna comment on this, but our proposal is for a pavilion picnic area. Uh, uh, the Zag Group came in and wanted tennis courts. This is not a large enough development for tennis courts, in our opinion. This builder doesn't want to do tennis courts, uh, but we'd like to do, uh, the, the Zag Group also proposed a one-acre, uh, community garden area, and we're not opposed to a garden area, but we think one acre's a little much. I mean, there's only forty-six people, so, uh, so what we're proposing on the conditions is, is the, uh, on the stipulations, we would stipulate there'd be a covered pavilion, picnic pavilion with tables and so forth under it. We would dedicate some space for a community garden, but we'd rather it not be an acre. Uh, but the, the setbacks are a little bit problematic for this builder. They can't get all their plans, uh, there's a couple more plans there. They can't get all their plans on, with, with a ten-foot setback, twenty foot between houses. The Zag Group had recommended five and ten, five-foot sideline, ten foot between houses. That's really what we want, but, uh, the, uh, I saw, staff recommended that. Zag Group came in with ten-foot side setbacks and twenty foot between houses, and our builder cannot do that. So, I'm hoping you guys will, or you folks will, will work with us on that. If, if not, then, uh, uh, we're gonna lose this builder, and we'll have to regroup. So...
You actually have another minute, if you want to continue on. You said you want to save two minutes. I think we set the clock at seven.
Okay, well...
So, if you got another, you got another minute.
If I could just reserve the remaining time to respond to the question, that's what I'd like to do.
Yes, sir.
I would, one other, just quick comment. We had at the, at the, uh, neighborhood meeting that we had, the committee, I think they called it a C I M meeting, nobody was there in opposition. At the Zag Group, there was nobody there in opposition. Uh, the Panhandle Homeowners Association, as this board knows, is very active. They're not here in opposition, as far as I know, so, I mean, I, I, we're downzoning the property, so I would just ask that y'all consider it in that light, that rather than put a neighborhood strip center in there that's gonna have fifty percent occupancy, we think this is just a much better use for the neighborhood.
Thank you, sir.
I'll reserve the remaining, whatever it may be.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody would like to speak in opposition to? Uh, what did he have? No, he used up on, oh, the minute, the minute. All right, we got one minute for anybody would like to speak in favor of. Anybody like to speak in favor of? Hearing none, anybody like to speak in opposition to? Anybody opposed applicant's request? All right. Uh, would you like to, uh, comment further? You got three minutes.
Well, I don't really have rebuttal, I don't guess, but, uh, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to answer questions. I mean, we think this is a fair, uh, and a good use of the property. Uh, I can tell you a little bit more about the builder, and a little bit more about the size homes, if you'd like to hear that.
Well, if there's some questions that the commissioners have, they've addressed that just a minute.
Let me just respond to questions, yeah, Mr. Chairman, that's okay.
Madeline, you said there's conditions to this.
Yes, there are. There are ten recommended conditions. The condition number one, the development shall be no more than forty-six single-family residential lots, consistent with the approved preliminary plat dated one-fourth twenty-twenty-one. All homes must have front facades constructed with forty percent brickstone or hard coat stucco, or a combination thereof, with the remaining facade consisting of hard plank and other accent materials, reflective of the Panhandle overlay specifications for architectural appearance of homes. Finals shall only be permitted to be used on the eaves and sofas. A plan book shall be submitted prior to the final plat application to the Community Development Department, and the, that would include building elevations, design criteria applicable for entries, porches, doors, windows, dormers, callias, corners, rakes, garages, roofs, landscaping, fencing, retaining walls, exterior colors, and materials. A homeowner association shall be established for the proposed development for the purpose of providing sustainable maintenance of common areas and covenants regulating sustainable uses in structures. Provide one access street from Panhandle aligned with Bonanza Church Road, and the other right-of-way improvements as required by the Clayton County Transportation and Development Department. Residential lots shall have the following minimum setback standards. The front shall be thirty feet, side ten feet, with a total of twenty between structures, and a rear twenty-five feet. All corner lots should have thirty-foot yard setback on both road frontages. Condition number seven, all homes to have a minimum of two-car garages. Condition number eight, provide twenty-five-foot vegetative buffer with a minimum six-foot high fence located internal to the proposed buffer, where adjoining single-family residential zone properties. Condition number nine, at least one hundred percent of the total, twenty percent required open space shall be accessible by public street right-of-way, and shall be usable and active recreational space to include picnic areas with tables, tennis court, and community garden areas not less than one acre in area. Condition number ten, provide decorative fencing and appropriate planning that's year-round to screen the rear yards of all properties that are joined Panhandle and Tara Road. This, the, these are the ten concluded, uh, conditions. Some of these conditions were conditions that the applicant stated, that they, uh, that the board, that the Zag Group had added that they had, um, wanted to comment on.
Commissioner Franklin?
Yes. All right. First of all, thank you, uh, Madeline and Tyler and your team for working on this. Um, I've done extensive research with this land, and I can say that the group that's come in before us has done an absolutely amazing job of building out that Tara Road community property. Uh, we do realize that that Tara Road community property that's already in existence has been there a long time, and we thank you all also for being the cornerstone of Clayton County and, and actually donating land to build a school, because quite often we're talking about how it impacts our school. And, um, to hear that you all are coming back and being responsible enough to say that I didn't build out this land because it's not right for commercial property. Uh, as one that has previously lived in that area, I agree with that assessment, as well as a professional in industry, I agree with that assessment. Now, I also agree that adding a, a one-acre, uh, community garden is a bit much. I think it's very ambitious, and it's great for us to have community gardens, the tennis courts, but within maybe less than a mile down the road, we have the most beautiful tennis courts that there are, and we want to get people into our parks that we're already spending taxpayer dollars on. So, with all of that being stated, I'm fine with reducing the community garden area. I am fine with the pavilion, because again, it's just the sign of the times, people are no longer going inside of a clubhouse. We get so many calls about the clubhouse not, you know, they having issues with that. But, in return for that, I'm gonna ask that, uh, you all consider that even though we're just zoning right now, that you don't bring something in here that is already the same old same old. What do I mean by that? When I look at your website, and I sent it over to our I T director, asking him to pull it up, what I look at, and when I go visit these builders, they build a product different on the north end of town than what they want to build on the south end of town. And again, we don't need to redline our communities. We need to know that people are looking to move into Clayton County. I can tell you as a commissioner in that area that the average home sale has increased to well over three-hundred-and-sixteen thousand. And so, with that being stated, we need something different aesthetically. And I ask that simply because at this particular time, we're asking for conditions to be augmented from the Zag Board. So, if they're willing to do that, and they're also willing to honestly add a little bit extra streetlights, if possible, not just the minimum, just one or two here or there, because the minimum is still not lighting up our roads enough, and we know that we're dealing with the safety of our roads. We're gonna also have the sidewalks, which also require, I think that we can move forward, hopefully, with this project in a very quality fashion.
Sir, you agree with what she has stated?
Thank you, Commissioner Franklin.
Oh, one more, one more, Mr. Chair. I apologize, uh, David, and good to see you again. Um, I apologize, I missed a note. Landscaping. David and I, and the, uh, and you all talked about landscaping too often again. We put requirements in, and, and even with our building. You go out there and add a couple of sprays. But when we get these plans, in the beginning, they have all these beautiful shrubberies and flowers, so we want to make sure that that landscaping is beautiful, because that is what attracts people to our area. So, I apologize, but I missed that note.
Sir.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, we'll stipulate to the additional, uh, streetlights, and then we'll intensify the landscaping. Um, my question is, can you work with us on the side setbacks and go with what the staff had recommended, rather than what Zag had recommended?
I don't mind that if you're not gonna build just the same old plain old house, because that, that house aesthetically needs to look like what's being offered in, um, the Brook Haven area, because people are moving into Clayton County, and right now there is a housing shortage. So, um, in the words of all the other builders and developers that I just recently met with during a Communities on the Rise event, I mean, they, they can't build houses fast enough to sell them. So, if you build a quality home that is going to attract the people that we need in our community, you gonna sell the homes. But I really need for us to offer something different. Um, I'm even willing to, you know, look at the forty percent, um, it's forty percent stone or brick, so you can still deal with that. But I really wish that, um, Jason could pull up the website of the builder that you, uh, selected, and you will see a distinction between the homes that they're looking at building in Clayton versus the aesthetics of the homes in other areas.
Uh, Mr. Reed has a comment to make.
Uh, just so that it's clear on what the applicant is agreeing to, um, Madam Commissioner, you said that you wanted, you were okay with reducing the acre of, uh, community garden. What size were you thinking about recommending?
They could simply take a couple of the lots and turn it into a community garden, because also, I mean, look at the community garden we have over in, um, in our Gerald Matthews area. They're very attractive, but this, you gotta get people to use them. So, um, less than an acre, I mean, they can make a recommendation on that. And as you can see, let, let's go back to here real quick. Look at this website. If you can move through that, Jason, that would be great. Hey, y'all, I'm, I'm sorry for going back and forth, but I'm on business travel, trying to make sure, uh, folks got employee benefits during this time. Go back up a little bit, Jason, if you mind. Stop there. Look at this home, but go back, go back where you were before. Not the interior, look at this. That home does not look like what you're proposing to us today. Now, mind you, it doesn't have the brick and stone on it, but even architecturally, it's a little bit more involved. What builders want to do when they come to Clayton is build the most basic house. We're not building to what we perceive Clayton County to be, but we are building to what Clayton County is and the future. And so, I would suggest that as other developers have requested from them to do, bring us something that is more involved architecturally. And I definitely, um, think that we could have a community garden with, um, in the space of just even one or two of the lot sizes would be more than adequate.
I agree with you on the lot, on the size of the garden. I mean, I, I was gonna suggest maybe we do something like, uh, seventy-five feet by one hundred or something like that, but I, I would say this, the, uh, if you could put the plat back up, the, uh, I've lost my pointer, can't see with the mask, the, uh, there is a very large, uh, open space right here. This is where the pavilion will be, and there is a lot of open space in there. I mean, I, I would submit to, why don't we let the residents determine the size of the garden? Because I don't think you're gonna have forty-six homeowners out there planting tomatoes, you know? I think you may have a half a dozen of them, but, uh, so I would hate to get in there and excavate and plow up, uh, a large area. I, I would just say, there is gonna be a mandatory membership H O A put in place, and I would say let the H O A determine the size of the, of the garden area. It, it could fluctuate up and down over time. I don't, uh, to me, that's an H O A function.
I, I agree with you, David, but look, you don't have to talk about us folks that only gardening pots now. But at any rate, hey, we gonna keep it moving. So, there are a lot of people that do like community gardens, but you're right, there are those that, it ain't gonna be forty-six of them. It's gonna be folks like me that just put a plant in that little pot on the back patio. Um, I'm fine with what you have in the plant, but again, my biggest concern is landscaping, a little bit more extra lighting, not just the bare minimum. Anything more than the bare minimum is great. I think the county needs to relook at what our minimum is. And then also, bring us a little bit more of an involved architectural project, and not just the same old same old.
All right. I would, I would, uh, I would commit to, I, I do not know the formula for the streetlights in this particular, uh, district, but I would commit to you that we would do twenty-five percent more than whatever the minimum is on the street lighting. Would, would that work for you?
That would absolutely work for me. We're good on the garden. You, you committed to the landscaping, you're going to, um, add the extra lighting. Oh, there was one other thing we discussed. Remember, we discussed the fact that several of these homes need to be designed for seniors in mind, because I just recently got an email even from Ms. Ansley, and you know, I don't know, David, if you've seen our, um, our budding senior community. Now, I'm gonna tell you, we got some sixty and seventy-year-olds that can run, uh, circles around, some thirty-year-olds. And so, what they're looking for is homes which just basically have a master on the main. So, what percentage are you all willing to build specific to our senior community, so we can continue to grow that vibrant community that has the expendable income, that are retiring out, and that can use our nationally accredited senior services division?
After we, after we talked with you, Commissioner, last week, um, I went back to the builder, about eighty percent of their homes have master on the main.
So, we're good to go. All right, Mr. Chair, I really don't need to, um, line that up and go back through the notes we made. I'm willing to make a, um, a motion.
Hold on just a second, I think Mr. Reed has something to interject.
Yeah, um, Madam Commissioner, um, if, just wanted to let you know that if they put more streetlights in the, um, proposed division, then the cost of those streetlights will be, um, borne by the people who move there. Just wanted to let you know that.
I'm, sir, I'm more than aware of that. I appreciate you telling me that, but safety, we're not talking about a huge cost in dollars. I've looked at my bill in particular, you're talking about rather not even thirty bucks, if that much. Safety is our number one concern. Safety has been the concern of our community members. And again, with us trying to make sure that we have a senior community, and I don't know if you're aware, but that community actually, um, has a, a continuous sidewalk space where it's very close to the grocery store, to Kroger, and to an area that's very vibrant, so people will be able to travel back and forth. Um, you know, we just approved golf carts and so forth. So, I don't think that, uh, where I do appreciate your note, I don't think that's a significant enough note that needs to be brought forth. So, I'm still gonna ask for it to be in the recommendation.
There was no, no problem with having to add it, he just wanted to make sure that in total transparency, that was...
Oh, I'm clear, I'm clear, but again, it's not a significant enough amount. What we're adding, what we're adding to the aesthetics of this home and the busier architectural design is already gonna add quite more than a streetlight. Um, dealing with thirty dollars here or there on a streetlight is still thinking about, uh, you know, again, we need to be shooting higher, so I don't want to go back and forth. Note well taken, but let's move forward and, um, make this motion.
Well, we're waiting on your motion, Commissioner.
I make a motion that, um, if the builder, as we just stated, is willing to follow the conditions as outlined, but adding to the increased landscaping, which will be approved and sent in, um, to add, as he said, twenty percent extra lighting in that community, um, that would be absolutely great. Also, we added that, um, the builder would submit, um, which really would be upon, um, final approval of the plaque, uh, for a more, uh, involved architectural design. And, um, we agreed on the, on allowing the space that's already included for the gardening area, uh, to be there. And then we augmented to have just the pavilion, uh, for the area as well. And that's, and thus I recommend approval for these homes.
And if you would, Ms. Pan, read, I hate to do it to you, but read everything to our understanding.
Okay, let's see, I, there are ten conditions. I could address the conditions where, where, and where we've modified, uh, per Commissioner Franklin's, uh, suggestions or decision. And I just want, one clarification, Commissioner, you want, you want additional landscaping? Is that landscaping that you're referring to a lonely entrance, or where are?
Uh, uh, great question, Madeline. All of the above, but I believe that will be included as they submit their final plans. Do you correct?
Right, they'll, they'll submit a landscape plan, but we want to be able to specify where that landscaping should occur.
Throughout the entire community, in between, I mean, throughout the entire community?
In the common.
I'm sorry?
In the common areas, I would assume, because otherwise, then we would be dealing with the single-family lots.
Oh, no, throughout the entire area, the front entrance, the single-family lots, yes.
Okay, I understand, thank you. I can, I'll, I'll address the recommended changes. Uh, condition number two, uh, addresses the, the facade and the, and the, the amount of brick, the forty percent brick and the type of materials to be used on the building. So that condition number two will be adding language that state that the, the single-family structure shall be architecturally, shall have increased architectural design features.
Correct, that is correct.
Condition number two, been modified to reflect that. Condition number five, that reads about provide one access street from Panhandle Road and Bonanza Church Road and other right-of-way improvements as required by the Clayton County Transportation and Development Department. I'll add to that statement that the access road shall be provided and aligned, and right-of-way improvements and additional, twenty-five percent additional streetlights shall be provided, subject to the, the requirements of the Clayton County Transportation and Development Department. That would be modified the language number five to address the street lighting.
That is correct.
Right. Condition number six deals with the setbacks. The applicant requested that the setbacks of the staff recommendation be recognized. I'm not sure, what, was there any, uh, any change addressed there or not? Condition number six was addressing setbacks.
No, not really. And, and review with me, please, Madeline. What is the, um, the side setback total again between two houses?
Right. The, uh, the, the recommendation is, is ten feet on each lot, so that's twenty feet total between the two structures?
We're, we're good to go. Yes, ma'am, we're good, thank you.
That's what, ZAG recommended.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's what we said, okay, that condition remains unchanged. The condition number nine, that addresses the, uh, open area, at least one hundred percent of the total twenty percent required open space shall be accessible by the public, uh, street right-of-way, and shall be usable active recreational space to include a picnic pavilion, picnic, surrounding picnic areas with tables, which we're striking the tennis court, and is also to include a community garden, and we're striking any reference to the size of the community garden, unless we wanted to go with the seven-five-hundred square foot minimum.
That's, that's great.
Do we want the seven-five-hundred square foot minimum, or just ask that they provide a community garden with no?
No, just the community garden, because I stated what they've already included is more than enough space.
So that's condition number nine with those modifications.
Yes, ma'am, yes.
So those are the modifications to three conditions as submitted, that's modification to condition number nine, modification to condition number five, and modification to condition number two.
Did you put the eighty percent of it with master on the main?
The eighty percent master on the main would be a modification to condition number two.
Okay, yes, ma'am. So I make that recommendation as it was read.
Hold on a second, Commissioner. Yes, sir.
Could we just clarify, because I thought the Commissioner had, had said she was okay with a five-foot sideline and ten-foot between houses, and that didn't get changed. And that.
Oh, whoa, 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 you saying ten-foot total? David?
Ten-foot between homes, that's, that's standard in RF sixty-five.
Wait, 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 let me make sure we got this right. So you're saying ten-foot total, so one side of the home is gonna be ten feet, well, five on one side, five on the other?
It, it could be.
For a total of ten feet?
It, it, it could be, I mean, we, we would have to stay five feet off the property line on each side, not less than ten feet in between houses.
No, David, that's not gonna work, I apologize. Um, the most I'm willing to make a recommendation on is the twenty, and, and you and I spoke specifically about, I don't wanna name the area, we don't want houses that close. That area, that would make that area too different from every place else, unless you're willing to make this entire community, a senior community, that would not fit within this area and in our community.
Could you go along with seven and a half and fifteen?
If you add that extra, um, if you add the, what, you gonna add firewalls? In these houses?
They won't. Fire alarms, yes, ma'am, not sprinklers.
Firewalls, I didn't say fire alarms, firewalls.
No, there won't be firewalls, because they're not, they're not detached.
Okay, is Chief Marcus in there? What's the minimum in our, our either, um, Maryland, I mean, sorry, what is the, what is the minimum for our county at this time?
I apologize for not being able to, but there is a minimum requirement, uh, based on the setback, that it, it used to be three feet, I think it's been increased, and the five may be that number, that you do have to, even though it's, it's detached, it still is required to have a firewall if you have a certain distance between the structures.
My point exactly, and can we clarify what that, um, is? Because i- if, if that's the case, then we need to make sure we're in line with that requirement. Is Chief Marcus in available, or the fire marshal available to answer that question?
No, he's not.
Distinctively?
No, they are not, uh, present.
Well, we may have to hold this, because we can't vote on something that we're not certain of, and we don't have, um, definitive information. I'm not willing to put my vote at risk for that without having accurate information. I tell you what, can Mr., um, Mr. Reed, can we postpone the motion since we've had the hearing while somebody get the chief, um, or either the fire marshal on the line to clarify this question?
You wanna hold the vote pending?
Just so we go on with the rest of the meeting, once we get the information, then we'll have accurate information, and I can make a motion off of information that's provided.
And sir, you're not willing to go along with the twenty, twenty feet?
That's what I indicated in my presentation, that the, we can't do these large ranches with a twenty-foot separation and ten-foot side. That, that's one of the builder requirements, that they wanna put ranches on here, as you can see, most, well, one of these are two-story, a couple of them are two-story, but they've got ranches and story and a half. All of them just about gonna have the master on the main, but we can't live with, the footprint of those houses will just eat up the lot.
And David, I, I'm, I'm clear on that, but as a commissioner, I want to make sure that I get what you can't live with, but I wanna make sure that our community is going to live, and that we have whatever in place, what needs to be in place for the safety of this community. So the only thing that I'm particularly asking is that Mr. Chairman and his staff get the answer to that question, and then we'll be able to make a motion, and we move on with the, um, rest of the meeting outside of this proposal. And then once we get that answer, then I can make a recommendation in all fairness.
Section, uh, forty-two dash sixty-one point three C says, "All new one and two-family dwellings built closer than fifteen feet from another structure or closer than ten feet to the property line must be equipped with an approved sprinkler system or constructed of non-combustible exterior masonry materials and have protected openings."
Awesome. Uh, David, are y'all willing to do that?
I tell you, I, I, I think, uh, I, I'm gonna have to get client, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to bring the client into, into the loop on this, so I would just respectfully ask that we defer to, uh, table it.
That's more, I'm sorry.
And I'm gonna be out of the country next month on, I've been here in the fifteenth, so, so maybe we defer, if, if it please the, the chair, maybe we defer it to July?
What do you want to do, Commissioner?
That's fine with me, because our code speaks clearly what the requirement is. We're not changing the code for the safety of our community, and so it would be, um, up to the petitioner to decide they want to adhere to the code, and we can make the recommendation at that time, so I'm fine with it.
So you wanna hold it until when, and I think this is a companion case, Ms. Pan?
Uh, sort of recommend that, both that and the companion case to the, the date that, um, that David has recommended to this board.
Which date?
I, I, I make that motion.
June what?
Just something other than June fifteenth?
Okay, so July.
Okay.
What's the date?
July twentieth.
July twentieth. It's July twentieth, Commissioner Franklin.
Yes, sir, all right, I make that recommendation and, um, formally to the board.
All right, the motion is to table it until July twentieth. That's correct, twentieth, right, okay. Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Probably moving to second, any other questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this unanimous. Thank you, sir.
Sounding the record, if you don't, the, uh, the related case to the preliminary plaque.
Yes, please.
Sounding of the related case to the rezoning that we just heard, LS two-one-zero-two-zero-zero-two-two, the applicant Clayton Terra LLC is requesting a preliminary plaque, Panhandle Village subdivision, approval for fifteen, four-five-two acres of land located at fourteen-twenty-five Terra Road and ten-four-fifteen Panhandle Road, which is further known as the parcel ID, three, two parcels that are identified on your agenda. The request is for the subdivision of forty-six single-family detached lots. Subject property is currently in zone general business. The proposal is to rezonate to PUD to accommodate the approval of the preliminary plaque. Again, the recommendation for the planning group is approval, and the zoning advisory group is approval with conditions, with the ten conditions of earlier stated.
Again, Madam Clerk, let the record reflect that Commissioner Franklin, uh, made a motion to table until July twentieth, and it was, uh, confirmed by the board.
So moved?
No, it wasn't a motion, we already voted on it.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I was just making sure that, uh, she put into the record that you did make the motion, and we approved both.
And just, just to, for clarity, that the second one will be a public hearing?
Public hearing, right.
Yes.
I'd ask to hold this one if I can, there's no reason to have a public hearing on something that we know.
We have to have a public hearing on the second one, not the first one. We had one on the first one, because we did not have it as of yet.
All right, I'm clear.
Okay.
The next item is item number twenty-five, BOC twenty-one oh-three dash zero-one oh-two, CUP to allow automotive service center.
Agenda item BOC two-one-zero-three zero-one zero-two, the applicant David White is requesting a conditional use permit for a proposed take-five oil change automotive service center located at seven-three-three-zero Jonesboro Road. The subject property is currently in zone general business. The property is located just north of, uh, Battle Creek Road. The parcel ID is identified on your agenda. Staff recommendation is for approval, zoning advisor group recommendations for approval with conditions, five noted conditions.
Yes, applicant. State your name, please, and any minutes that you would like to reserve and rebuttal, should somebody oppose.
David White, five-hundred Sun Valley Drive, Suite H-three, Roswell, Georgia. Um, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, appreciate you having us here to talk about it. Like to reserve maybe three minutes.
Three minutes, place seven on the clock. Please, sir, proceed.
Um, we're here today to request the conditional use permit for this take-five. Um, I'm here representing Alterman and the share group, who would be the owner and the operator, um, of this business. It's a take-five oil change center. Um, they provide a socially-distanced model where customers come in, stay in their car, um, they can stay away from people working on it. They provide, um, quick minor services like, um, oil changes, air filter changes, wipers, batteries, things of that nature. Um, so get in, get out in five minutes. That, this would create twelve to fifteen jobs for the area. Um, it shares an existing driveway with the Bojangles next door, so no new traffic movements on the existing road, which is already really busy. Um, there's a D cell lane in place for this right-in, right-out, and this property would utilize that existing driveway, and, you know, internal movements would, would come from that, so another, uh, positive. Aesthetically pleasing architecture, um, with three garage bays. Um, and then this property is set vacant for years, so this would be a nice, um, increase to both sales tax and property tax. And I have here with me today, um, Dr. Kenneth Augustus Walker with the Augustus Group is our chief consultant, and I'd like to, um, turn it over to him for a few minutes and then come back to speak.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. It's good to see you again. It's been three years since I was here to present before the board, and I want to thank you for the way that this commission runs this county. This is the, I consult in three metro counties, this is the first one I've been able to go to a board meeting, and I feel completely safe. And I also want to thank, um, Commissioner Singleton Gregory, three years ago, when this same group I'm representing tonight, we, she approved for us to get a building Popeyes off of Anvil Block Road. It became the number-one selling Popeyes outside of Metro Atlanta. They ended up selling it, I wish we could have bought it, Mr. Chairman. But, uh, I want to thank, uh, the staff of Mr. Ogieke, who did an outstanding job for helping. Because of the pandemic, a lot of things got lost in the process, but between Mr. Ogieke and Commissioner Davis's staff, your staff has been stellar in helping my client to navigate the COVID, which was no one's fault, and Ms. Marilyn, of course, has just been golden. So this group, I represented him three years ago with the Popeyes, they have been great stewards here in Clayton County, uh, they brought, they built the tax base here, and as he just stated, Mr. White, this will create at least ten to fifteen new jobs, it's totally safe, uh, Mr. Commissioner, you drive in, drive out, and gonna make it aesthetically pleasing as well, so I think it'll be an asset in this county to have this, and these are hard-working people. I would not have represented them three years later on a different project. So I just speak in support of it and the work that they do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. I would just like to follow up. Um, we met with Commissioner Davis, uh, virtually, and he had expressed concern about pedestrians on, in the area, and, um, and this, for their safety. Um, so what we, uh, talked about doing is widening the sidewalk. There's an existing sidewalk there now, and I think it's five feet, but it's right on the curb, and what we discussed is putting in a grass strip, and then another, um, ten-foot sidewalk, um, by that to separate the pedestrians and give them more space to move. Um, the ZAG group thought that the ten-foot sidewalk was a little large, so I believe in the conditions, it says eight feet or greater, uh, we'll have, happy to do, um, whichever, um, the board feels is appropriate. And, um, if you have any questions for me, I'd love to answer them.
Okay, we'll get to that in just a few. Is there anybody here that'd like to speak in favor of applicant's request? Anybody like to speak in favor of? Anybody like to speak in opposition to? Anybody opposed? All right, there's no opposition, but if you would like to speak your last, uh, I think it was, two minutes, what did you reserve, two or three minutes?
I think that's all I have for the basics of the project. Um, it's been great working with staff. Um, staff is recommending approvals, ZAG was recommending approval, and, uh, we respectfully asked that you would consider approving this conditional use permit so that we could have another business here in Clayton County.
Ms. Pan, could you read the conditions?
Yes, the, uh, conditions, read, condition number one, "The proposed automotive service building shall have a maximum of three-car garage bay area consisting of one thousand four-hundred-and-twenty-three square feet, as depicted on the applicant's site plan dated March first, two thousand and twenty-one." Condition number two, "The use shall be limited to minor automotive repairs and services, uh, such as sales and installation of lubricants, batteries, and oil, and oil changes." Condition number three, "Shared access will be subject to approval of the Transportation and Development Department." Condition number four, "Must adhere to all county codes and regulations pertaining to site development, except for where relief may be granted by the Board of Zoning Appeals and other authorized agencies." Condition number five, "Must provide a minimum eight-foot wide sidewalk along Jonesboro Road, and if it's so desired by the board, we could add, subject to the, the approval of Transportation and Development." That concludes the five recommended conditions.
Okay. Commissioner Davis?
Thank you, and thank you for addressing, uh, those concerns. I appreciate that. There were two other concerns I think we spoke about. Uh, one was the driveway, there's one entry point in that driveway, correct? Um, by the, what is it, the Bojangles?
Correct.
Who owns that driveway? And I just want to make sure that authorization, um, to use that is, I guess, in line, um, with just owning, owning property.
Yeah, so when this was plotted, um, it appears the detention pond was designed for both of these parcels, and the driveway also, so there are easements in place that grant this property the right to use that driveway.
Okay, yeah, that was the only question I really had. Um, the only other thing, I do want to change it from eight-foot to ten-foot wide sidewalks. That's it.
Yeah, absolutely.
But if, as long as you're good with that.
Ms. Pan, you look like you've got some concern about that.
No, I, what can I miss, what you said about the sidewalk?
No, we, we will go from the eight back to the ten.
Back to the ten.
Yes, ma'am. And if, other than that, I'm.
Hold on a second. I'm sorry, Commissioner. You are ingrained with that, right?
Yes, the 10 sidewalk is appropriate.
So I move that we approve this.
All right, motions took for approval with the conditions. I will second the motion. Are there any other questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this unanimous.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, board.
The next item is item number 26, BOC 2104-0107, CUP to allow a C store, gas fuel, and drive-through restaurant.
Agenda item BOC 2104-0107, the applicant Carl Lutzens, on behalf of Alibah Investments Inc. is requesting conditional use permit for a new convenience store with gas, fuels, and an attached drive-through restaurant. The subject property is located at 2901 Anvil Block Road, which is further identified as parcel number on the agenda. The subject property is zone MXI, mixed-use industrial, and is located within the Highway 42 overlay district on 0.88 acres of land. The recommendation by the zoning staff was approval conditional. The recommendation by the zoning advisory group is for denial.
Is applicant present?
Yes.
Please come forward, applicant. Please state your name and location of your, your business or residence and then provide how many minutes you would like to save in rebuttal should somebody be opposed to you.
Good evening, board, Commissioner, Chairman. My name is Carl Lutzens. I reside at, my office is 114 Old Mill Road, that's in Carthageville, Georgia. I'm here on behalf of the owner, Alibah Investments, and I would like to reserve three minutes for rebuttal.
Okay, please proceed.
As I said, my name is Carl Lutzens. I'm the engineer on this project. The owner is, is Alibah, and he is also here with his son in the, in the audience. They've owned this property for, for many years now, for almost five years. And they've thought about what to do with it. And what, what we've heard is, we've heard of a lot of, a lot of things about the area, and the area is certainly coming about. There's a lot of development going on in the area. See, just, just to the south of us, there's a new industrial facility coming out of the ground. There's some industrial facilities, yes, in that area. There's, on the west side of 575, there's, I mean, 675, there, there's some, some industrial facilities there growing, going out of the, coming out of the ground. In addition to that, we have the Walmart shopping center and some out parcels out, out front. Just south down Grant Road, you guys are also familiar with the FedEx facility that's there. It's relatively large. There's a lot of vehicles and trucks. And, and with that, there's a lot of employment in that area. We do see that the area growing, and we do recognize the, the architecture of the area and are, and we want to be very sensitive to that. What I've heard a lot about is, is referred to this project as a C store. We believe that it's much different than a C store because this project is, is a one-of-a-kind, and I want to demonstrate what that, what I mean by that. It's going to be very unique for this because this is a, it is a, it is a convenience store. That is correct. However, this is a convenience store with a franchise restaurant attached to it. The franchise restaurant that is committed to this site is Captain D's. This will be the first Captain D's restaurant that is attached to, on any end unit in the country. They've chosen Clayton County in this location because they believe that it is a perfect fit for them. We are here to, to show that, that with, with this, that does differentiate this development in not just being a C store. The standards because of Captain D's and the corporate involvement with this, with this site is that they will have enhanced standards for cleanliness and, and, and loitering and things like that. And so they want to have their landscaping looking, looking nice. And we believe this will be a very positive thing for, for the area, and it will be unique to the area. There are other convenience stores, but one, if you go west of, of the highway, there's a convenience store that caters mostly to trucks. Now, it's, it's being used, it does have a place for cars, but it's, it's very heavily industrial at that area. The Walmart has a gas, what we, what I call a gas island, it's really not convenience. The Walmart really is, is a gas island mostly for the patrons that are, are in the store, and they come and they, you know, they, they bought their groceries and they come and they, and they get their gas. And then there's an existing convenience store across from us that we feel like we differentiate from that by adding the restaurant se- segment to this project. The site is a very small project. It's .088 acres. It's very tough, but this is a, is a mixed-use zoning district. The zoning district is mixed-use, commercial, and industrial. And for that reason, we've put two uses on this property. So we feel like we're very, we're utilizing every inch of the property we can to make it a, a very conducive to the area, beautiful, attractive project. Also with me today, that I'll, I have some time remaining. I would like to bring up someone from the audience to speak from corporate Captain D's as well.
Hello, good evening. My name is Jeff White, and I'm director of real estate for Captain D's corporate office. I brought this property to the Dasanis, who are sitting out in the audience. The, I brought this to them about four, about four years ago because we had targeted this area for a Captain D's, but we didn't necessarily want to put a single freestanding building on it because of, of the cost to buy the land and develop the building. And if you're not familiar with the cost, it runs around 1.7 to, to $2 million for, for one single unit, you know, to develop. So, so we sort of tabled it, and then when COVID hit, what we decided to do was we come up with three new prototypes. Captain D's is normally built an 80-seater, and then we dropped it down to a 64-seater. They, the Dasanis actually have two Captain D's already, and they're actually building one in South Fulton as well, and then this would be their fourth store. And then they have seven convenience stores. And so when we started looking at, you know, them doing an end cap, you know, when we reduced the square footage, we dropped down to a 64-seater, then a 44-seater, and then a 22-seater. So now, Cap, and then Captain D's also has a walk-up that, that's being built in South Fulton. It's just going to be a drive-through only with a walk-up, sort of like what you've seen the Chick-fil-A buildings with their just drive-up. It's very much that prototype. So when we decided that we wanted these guys to, when we decided to do the end cap in a convenience store, we chose the Dasanis because we know what they build on their convenience stores. We know how clean they are. We know what they look like on the outside, how that, how well they've done. And then the two existing Captain D's they have, they are just extraordinarily really good franchisees. They follow the, the rules. They do everything correctly. So we wanted them to be the first to do this, this end cap because we thought they would do it right. We thought that they would, you know, do exactly what we tell them to do. They'll maintain it like we tell them to maintain it. And so we were excited about, you know, them coming on board and doing this. And so we really support them, and we hope that you guys will too.
How many seats are in this?
This will be a 22-seater is what will be in this one. It'll be a smaller unit because the area, and the reason we would do a 22-seater is because this area is not large enough, we don't think. And right now, everybody knows with COVID, every restaurant in the United States has changed far as your, your, you know, people coming in and sit down. Their business right now, they have a store, if you want to go and look at some of their stores, they have one on Baker Road in Acworth, Georgia, a big, a big store. That's a really big one. And then they have a, a store on Jimmy Carter Boulevard at Peachtree Industrial in Norcross. And that's a smaller footprint. But 70% of their business right now is drive-through, takeout. So that only leaves 30%. Well, that's pretty standard right now with all of the Captain D's and, you know, and restaurant, you know, QSRs. It's the convenience. So that just makes more sense to have a smaller footprint than it would be to go in and try to build a, you know, a 60-seater when you're not going to be able to fill it up anymore. And that's what, you know, we're looking at now. Everybody's looking at it, I mean, all across the country.
Well, thank you for that response.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, we're good right now.
Okay.
Right now, stand, stand close though.
Okay, all right.
Anybody like to speak in opposition to applicant's request? Come forward.
Greetings again, Regina Deloach, unincorporated Brex. Currently, we, do we consider the quality of life for the legacy residents that have been in these areas? There's data that is showing, and I'm going to touch two points, for quality of life for us in this, in that area. We have to diversify our housing stock in order for us to move forward. Also, data is saying also that the health and wellness in our community, we are short of healthcare providers. If we were to take a drive between Brecken, Breckenridge Run all the way down to Forest Parkway, there's a total of 11 gas stations with two that's already been approved. That's a total of 13 gas stations in less than three and a half miles. Why are we approving additional gas station in that area? As it was stated, the gentleman prior to me, he said, "We've already approved a Popeyes, a Taco Bell, and now a Captain D's." That is nothing healthy about any of those restaurants that will improve my quality of life. And as you said, we're trying to attract people, not redline people out. As it was stated at the last zoning meeting, the gentleman spoke and said, "I can't live, work, and play in this county simply because I have to go elsewhere with my family in order to find food." A Captain D's is just not what we're looking for. An additional gas station is just not what we're looking for. If we're going to create jobs, we need jobs that are going to be sustainable for the community. CCPS also reached out, and we asked, we talked about jobs. They also said, "We're looking for jobs not in food services for our children." We're looking to diversify those jobs for our children as well. So at this time, our disposable income is going outside of the county because Popeyes, Taco Bell, and Captain D's and additional gas stations coming into our community is just not what we're looking for. We already have an abundance of these items saturating our community. Let's think about the legacy residents that have been here already. It's called quality of life for us, not just another convenience store with gas, with a playground which does nothing for us because the one that we have that's coming with the playground, think about it, guys, sex trafficking. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak?
May I remove my mask?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, everyone. Quickly, the auto industry is moving towards.
State your name.
Oh, I apologize. I'm Drew Andrews, unincorporated Clayton County. Excuse me. As I was stating, the auto industry is moving towards electric vehicles. In fact, most of them plan to be, to move from the gas engine vehicles to totally electric vehicles in the next five to 10 years. In addition to that, the Biden administration is proposing to spend $2 trillion towards infrastructure, which is roads, water, and electric grid. So my question is if we want to remain, want, if we strive to be the world-class competitors that we, we will be, we need to think towards charging stations and electric grids, not gas stations. So I just want us to look forward and not at the now, you know? And, and the forward is only five to 10 years. That's right around the corner. And all due respect to Captain D's, I just did a search on my phone before I came up here looking for healthy foods near me. Only three came up, and one is Olive Garden. So we need to do better.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak in opposition to? Anybody else? Sir, you have three minutes on your rebuttal.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd like to talk a little bit, you know, I'm going to let Jeff talk more about the, the food and the type of food they have. He does more about that from Captain D's. But I want to talk a little bit about the area and being mixed-use and the, and the industrial that's there. And the quality, you talk about quality of life. Well, a lot of us spend, spend a lot of times, maybe we, maybe we go home or we have to drop, drive across town to go to a grocery store or restaurant. This will allow a lot of those workers on their way when they leave home to, to fill up with gas and to buy food for themselves and their family. So I, I would argue that this would actually help with spending time and quality of time with your family by being able to bring something home. As we, as Jeff also mentioned before, is that COVID has changed our, our life. We, we all see it, it's changed us dramatically, and the amount of time we spend indoors sitting down. And we're doing that not in restaurants, inside anymore. We're doing that at home. And this gives that an opportunity for that area to have something that, that can provide the needs of someone getting off work. So I, I will, will answer any questions. I'll defer the rest of my time. Jeff, to talk about the menu.
Let me just speak a little bit about the menu. We do have a healthy menu. There is grilled shrimp. There's baked fish. So there is a whole lot of items that's on that menu that is, that is healthy, and you can eat healthy. You just don't have to eat fried food. That's entirely left up to you, but it is an option. And then the other thing she was, the lady was mentioning about sustained jobs, you know, looking for this. Well, we're going to employ 25 people, possibly 30 at this location, not at $7.75 an hour, not at $8.50 an hour, but anywhere from $10 to $15 an hour. That's the standard rate that what we're paying. And those jobs are long-term jobs, and there are opportunities for these people to grow, to learn, to, to manage stores. A general manager at Captain D's makes anywhere from $45,000 to $85,000 a year running one of those stores, depending on the volume of that store. So, so far as having sustainable jobs, also too, let me just speak to this area here. This area is zoned or retail, it's a retail quarter. You've got a Walmart across the street. You've got a Wendy's across the street. You've got a, you've also got a couple of banks. You've got Dollar Tree. You've got Waffle House. So it's not like you're going, that we're going in and destroying a bunch of houses and tearing things down. We're actually going into a retail pocket that is already exists, that was already, that was meant to be retail. So, so I think that this is a positive build for this particular section of Anvil Block Road. So that's pretty much all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Pan, there's, there's some conditions, I believe.
Yes, sir. Yes, there are. The condition number one reads, the site shall be limited to a maximum 4,000 square foot convenience store with retail and gasoline service with no more than four service, service, service pumps. The, in addition to the, which also should include a drive-through restaurant. Condition number two, all trash refuse areas are enclosed on three sides with brick and other masonry material consistent with the primary building materials. Number three, no outside vending machines allowed. Number four, provide one trash receptacle container for each service pump and at the store entrance. The number, condition number five, the maximum development site area not to exceed 0.88 acres consistent with the site plan submitted that's dated 4/3/2021. Condition number six, access and right-of-way improvements are subject to the approval of the Clayton County Transportation and Development Department. Those are the six recommended conditions.
Thank you. Commissioner Gregory?
All right, Mr. Chair. With that, I offer a motion to approve this petition with those stipulations that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Probably moving to second. Are there any questions? All right, hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
4-1, it passes. Madam Clerk, does that conclude the agenda? Is there a need for executive session? for executive session?
Yes, on litigation and personnel.
All right, I'll make a motion to go into executive session for litigation and personnel. Is there a sucking?
Second.
Probably move to sucking. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Issue unanimous. Everybody have a good night. Okay, conduct roll call. Commissioner Gregory?
I'm here, sir.
Commissioner Franklin? Commissioner Hambricht?
Present.
Commissioner Davis?
Present.
Commissioner Franklin? Madam Clerk, it appears we're all here except possibly Commissioner Franklin. Motion to reconvene. I'll make the motions. There a sucking?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Issue unanimous. Mr. Reed?
Would you like me to take them all together?
Please do.
Okay. First is a settlement agreement involving Annie Fomlevan and Xavier Alexander Marshall, Sheriff Hill in Clayton County, that resolved that related to an accident that occurred on December 1st, 2018, and is involved in civil action 2020 CB 02478 in Clayton County State Civil Court, State Court, correct, in the amount of $250,000. Second is I won't even pronounce the first name, V I E N G X A Y, last name Kunsaknarath, related to an accident that occurred on December 1st, 2018, and is involved in a civil action in Clayton State Court, 2020 CB 02478, in the amount of $80,000. The next is Robin Cooley as legal guardian of Mariana Franklin, related to an accident that occurred on or around March 5th, 2020, at or near Georgia Highway 42 in Clayton County, in the amount of $6,500. Next is on behalf of Robin Cooley herself, relating to an accident that occurred on or around March 5th, 2020, at or near Georgia Highway 42 in Clayton County, in the amount of $16,000. The next is relating to Renaya Armstead, relating to an accident that occurred, she was a passenger, on May 10th, 2020, involving Lieutenant Guthrie of the Clayton County Sheriff's Office, and that is in the amount of $300,000. The final is relating to William Elijah, related to a lawsuit that involved John Thomas, Wayne Thrift, John Flaherty, and the Clayton County Police Department and the county, relating to an incident that occurred on or around May 21st or May 22nd, 2020, at the River Ridge Apartments in Riverdale, Georgia, relating to arrest, incarceration, and prosecution, and that is in the amount of $40,000, and authorized the chief financial officer to amend the budget to reflect appropriate source revenue source and expenses required by these settlement agreements.
Okay, before we move to a motion, I believe Commissioner Franklin has logged on. Commissioner Franklin, are you there? Okay, well.
No, I am present. It was unmuted.
Okay, please let the record reflect that she's has joined us. All right, is there a motion to approve? I'll make the motions. There a sucking?
Second.
Probably move to sucking. Any questions on any of the items?
No, before we vote, I just want to say that as I have stated, I think it's very important that we hear from at least the defendants because even though as a board of commissioners, we have to make the decisions on such agreements, that it's important that we get the information directly from the defendant as opposed to making decisions without them being present, and that's based upon our practice as well as the outcome of many of our lawsuits. And we are setting a precedent of how people are to treat us by what we allow. So I'm ready.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay, because not enough information. Nay.
Four, one, it passes. Motion to adjourn.
Ms. Reed?
Come on, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Reed, I just want to say thank you for your legal expertise and your staff and what they do bring to us. Thank you.
All right, there's motion by Commissioner Franklin to adjourn. I'll suck in the motion. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Issue unanimous. Have a good night.